Hi, my name is Dr. John Furrow and it's been my privilege to serve as the interim head of school at First Presbyterian Academy this past school year. What I hope to do in this brief presentation of what we did at the town hall meeting a week ago is share with you a little bit about who we are at FPA, what our foundations are, the why we do things at FPA, and then also share some of the great things that we have been able to do this year, and also summarizing the parent survey that was recently done. So let's get started, shall we? First thing I want to share with you is the mission and vision of First Presbyterian Academy. The mission and vision sets our purpose and it says who we are. And that we exist to educate students with a biblical worldview and that they would take that into the world as disciples of Jesus Christ. Now, in order to get that done, we have a mission statement that kind of gives us guidance and direction in doing, making all of our decisions. And that mission statement is that we are a Christian community dedicated to providing a premier college preparatory education grounded in a biblical worldview which develops character in students from varied backgrounds for a lifetime of learning and service. And there's a few things in there that we tried to emphasize. First, equality education. A quality education that's going to prepare students for their future. But, but we want, we want to see most of our students go to college, but not all students are going to be going to college. So we want to give them the successful skills needed for the future. Those same skills that, that will benefit in college will benefit in life. Second, and probably most important is this concept of biblical worldview. We want to create students who are thinking critically about the world around them and thinking in a biblical way as to how to approach the world around them. And then the third, we want to develop the character that's necessary for a lifetime of learning and service. Because we want our students to not only be lifelong learners, we also want them to serve their communities well. Now, one of the things that the Board of Trustees has done is they have established for us some end statements. And these end statements basically serve as a picture of what we want an FPA graduate to look like when they graduate. And there's basically four areas that they come in. The first one is a superior education. And, and the end statements go a little bit further than just the four categories. They also give us some bullet points that serve as guidance for what that means. So what does superior education mean? Well, it means we want to protect small class sizes. It means we want to hire qualified teachers. It means that we want to create capable students. And it means we want students with a Christian worldview. And then the second category is that we want our students to be followers of Jesus Christ. That means that we want them to be committed to a personal relationship with Him. We want them to know and apply God's Word to their life. We want to love and serve others. And we want them to exhibit godly character by living out the fruits of the Spirit. The third category in our end statements is scholars of His truth. This means that, that we want excellence defined by a student's personal best. Because a student does not always have to get an A in order for it to be excellent for them. So where is that student's starting point and what would mean success for them? We want them to be able to articulate a biblical worldview and defend their Christian faith. Because many of them are going to be going to secular universities and their faith is going to be challenged and we want them to be prepared for that challenge. We want them to have the skills to think critically, logically, and independently. Not go along with the crowd, but, but to go along with Christ, to think for themselves as to what is right and wrong. We also want them to be proficient in college prep curriculum. So we've built a curriculum that allows students to, to excel. And if God has gifted them academically, they've been able to excel academically. So we want, want to protect and maintain that proficiency for a college prep curriculum. We also want to equip them for a lifetime of learning. Because learning should never stop. It should be something we're always involved in. And then the final category for end statements is stewards of His gifts. So what does that mean? Well, we want our students to use their giftedness for the God's glory. We want them to discover their giftedness and we want them to also be able to use their gifts to the glory of God. To manage their resources well, to know how to take care of the things that God has blessed them with. And to build on strengths, but also to manage weaknesses. We want them to be able to do, to, to deal with both and deal with both successfully. Now, you may ask, why is this important? And why does biblical worldview continue to come up repeatedly? Well, back in 1998, an acquaintance of mine, Dr. Glenn Schultz, wrote a book called "Christian Kingdom Education for the 21st Century." And in that book, he makes the statement that we are, are in the midst of a battle for the hearts and minds of our children and youth. That the world is coming after them. And, and we see this, if we look historically at the way political movements are done throughout history, we always see them attacking the children and the youth with indoctrination. Think, take for example Hitler's youth program. Hitler built his empire by getting the children and the youth to buy into him. So, and, and we also see this with Stalin, with the rise of the communism and Mao Zedong in China. So there is a battle going on for the heart and mind of our children and youth. And that battle is not just political, more importantly, that battle is actually spiritual, where the devil himself is trying to get at our children. So, look at it this way. Even before 1998 and Dr. Schultz, James Dobson, in a book called "Children at Risk", said, "A new civil war is raging in the country. This war is a war of values and whoever wins gets our children." That should, that should really scare us. The pastor, Dr. H.B. Charles Jr., said, "While you wait to teach your children truth, the world will not wait to teach them lies." So our, our youth are going to hear lies from the world. Somewhere they have to be able to get that truth. And that somewhere is you as parents. But a school like FPA could come alongside you and reinforce that with you. And it's important that the school is doing that as well. Because every educational system has a moral goal that it tries to attain and that informs its curriculum. It wants to produce a certain kind of being. That's Allan Bloom in a book called "The Closing of the American Mind." Bloom is pointing out the fact that education is also teaching morals, that there's a, there's a goal in every educational system. And the question we have to ask ourselves is, what, what is that goal in the educational system beyond getting college prepared or academics that we want our students to be exposed to? Bloom went on to point out as well that it even goes as far down as our philosophy of, of education. He says, "Behind every educational methodology is an educational philosophy. Behind every educational philosophy is a theology of the nature of the child, the role of the teacher, and the aims of learning." You see, what we do in the classroom each and every day is, has a philosophy underneath that's going to partially shape who the students are. And for that reason, the mission of FPA becomes vitally important to, to who we are and what we do and should be vitally important to you as parents to protect what your child is learning. That's why I like to say that Christian education is not, it is not an expense, but is an investment. Because you're investing in the future way your child will think. And that way needs to be, are they thinking like Jesus? Are they thinking from a biblical perspective? So, that's about, that's who we are and why someplace like FPA is important and valuable. But we also wanted to share with you some really interesting things about what took place this year. As we look back at the year 2023 and 2024 on campus, we see a lot of, of new and exciting things that are going on. For instance, one of the things is we have a new accreditation that we've joined partnership with. Now, for quite a while, we have been, we have been partners with accreditation organization called Cognia. Cognia is an excellent organization. They come in and they look at the academics, they look at the finances, they look at, at the administration and the way things are being run. And that's all great. But they're also a secular organization. They, they accredit public schools. They accredit charter schools and they accredit non-religious private schools as well. And it's great that we're a part of that organization. But nobody was looking at our, our spiritual life. Nobody's looking at the spiritual development of the students or the, the Christian philosophy of education that the teachers have. So we are now accredited by ACSSI, the Association of Christian Schools International. It is the largest Christian school accrediting organization in the world. And they have a dual accreditation with Cognia. So we're not dropping Cognia, we're simply adding ACSSI. But what's really important here is that ACSSI is going to become that, that organization that comes into the school the next time we have an accreditation visit and they're going to take the lead. So they're going to be looking at all the things Cognia requires, but they're also going to be looking at the spiritual life of the school, student spiritual formation, teachers, Christian philosophy of education. They're going to be looking for biblical integration in the classroom. And that's important that we add that piece to what we're doing. But then there were some other things that I wanted to mention to you that are a little closer to home. For instance, what about Crusader Station? What have we done this year at Crusader Station? Well, we had a grandparents' day in the fall. It was held on the deck of the station and it was very interactive. I wish, if you, if you weren't there, you didn't get a chance to see the grandparents playing with their grandchildren, coloring and playing games. It was really special. We also had donuts for dudes, muffins for ma'ams. We had a Christmas and a spring program that was simply adorable. In fact, the Christmas program, the three-year-olds all sang for the high school. And I don't know which was more fun, watching three-year-olds sing or watching our graduating seniors watching the three-year-olds sing because they were enjoying it so much. We've got a new playground for our preschool at Crusader Station. And we've implemented new technology that includes smart boards for the students. But that's not the end of it. We also have the preschool downtown. And a lot has been going on there. For instance, they've implemented a new curriculum. They also implemented the same new technology that includes smart boards. They've taken a variety of field trips. We've added a STEM class that, that is appropriate for the age. Added a Spanish class that's appropriate for this young age. Special days at downtown campus is included, grandparents' day, musical and arts programs, Dr. Seuss Week, that was a lot of fun, a Day of Prayer. There's, there's a water day activities that are coming up real soon and, and more. And some of those special days have also been service-minded activities. They participated in Toys for Tots. And they also participated in a diversity of needs and kindness to all program that's called KIND. And then at our lower school, there off of Snipes Road, we've had a lot of things that have, have happened there this year. We added Spanish. We had a Veterans Day program for over 250 veterans. Toys for Tots was run by the lower school and we provided 770 new toys to be distributed by the Toys for Tots group. Donated 100 non-perishables to local food bank for the 100th day of school. And I believe that was 100 non-perishables per classroom. Added a recycling program that was designed and headed up by our fifth graders. The, the lower school had an audition choir that performed multiple concerts in nursing homes around the city and even in Chick-fil-A twice. There's the Pop Stars program which recognizes students who demonstrate positive character traits. Students read over 32,000 minutes for the month of March to celebrate Read Across America Day. Good for them. Participated in the ACSSI Olympics. Five of our students placed in the top five of the category they were competing in and one of our students got a perfect score. And then they also had a variety of field trips. And then on the upper school campus, we also had a lot of things going on. We added three AP classes. We celebrated a national merit finalist, Drew Coppe. Competed in Youth and Government in the fall. Had multiple superior ratings at the Skiza Music Festival. Over 70% of middle school and high school students participated in athletics. And they, they succeeded. We have numerous region championships, numerous all-regional and all-state participants in both the middle school and, and the varsity level. And of course, we, we have, we have cross-country championships. We have, we did great with track and, and our volleyball team won the state championship. So we had a great year with the athletic program. In addition to all that, our students did over 5,000 hours of service in the community. That's phenomenal. Again, going back to our mission and those, those, those goals that are, are set for us. And that, that's one of our goals. Awarded the All-Time Champions Award by the Harvest Hope Commodity Supplemental Food Program. What that means is our students broke a record by feeding 902 people, preparing food boxes to be delivered by this organization that would feed 902 people and they packed all those boxes in just a couple hours. So, so we got an award of championships award from, from that organization. Then there's a spiritual retreat that was at Windy Gap, which is a, is a highlight for our students every single year. And, and recently our seniors were, were saying in chapel that that was, gave them some of their best memories. And, and I mentioned all the athletic awards. So we've, we've got so much going on. But one of the other things that we did this year was we took a, a parent survey. Now, we had gotten some feedback and had heard from a few people that they wanted, as a school, they wanted to know how their voice could be heard. They also wanted to know more about what was going on at the school. And that's really where this presentation came from. The idea of reporting back to you because your voice is important and we want to hear what you have to say. And I wanted to just share with you a little bit about the, the parent survey results. And one area of strength that came out of it was a, a couple different categories or a couple different questions combined to make what we call a general satisfaction score. And overall, our parents, 93% of our parents are, are satisfied with what we're doing at FPA and would recommend us to others. And we're seeing that now in our enrollment as we are currently over 600 enrolled for next year. And, and I know people on campus who have been praying for, for over 10 years for us to get back to that 600 number. So there, there's, there's a really, real good positive energy and a, and real good feeling about what's going on at the school. For good reason, we just talked about all that. But we need to keep it going. But I wanted to share with you that 93% general satisfaction score because as we strive to get better, it's always important to keep in mind that overall everybody's satisfied. But we do need to get better and we do need to keep working to, to improve. But specific areas that were mentioned as, as strong areas that, that students enjoy coming to school, that came out in the survey and we're really glad that they do. I thought this was really significant. Bible classes and chapel are essential to the education of our children. And the reason I think that's, is important, that, that score was actually 94%. That means 94 out of every 100 view Bible and chapel as essential. And, and that just blesses my heart. Loving and safe environment, 91% were, said that they indicated that we have a loving and safe environment. And I, I think we really do have a loving and safe environment for your students. I know that the teachers just, they, they love on your students every day. And then the fourth thing that I would say was a strength is 90% agreed that we're a small school doing big things. And, and that means that we're, we're basically doing the best that we can. And we really are. But again, we do want to do better. And for that reason, I wanted to also share with you some targets for improvements that came out of the parent survey. And, and let you know that, that we're hearing your voice when it comes to these areas. The, the first area is our resources and facilities. And, and you're gonna, you're gonna see in a moment where we, we have done a lot of things with our facilities that you may not have noticed. We agree with you that the facilities need to be worked on and we are working on that. We have a timetable for it that kind of spreads everything out so it doesn't become a financial burden. Another target for improvement, responding to questions within 24 hours. Whether that's the office or the teachers. If you call the office or send an email, you should expect to hear from somebody in 24 hours. And we got to do a better job of that. Now, let me also say, you also need to give us 24 hours because we've got a lot going on and sometimes we can't get to it right away. So, but, but please, you have every right, if you don't get a response from us in 24 hours, to come back and pose the question again. Also, there's a need for diversity in our student body. And I think, I think this diversity in, in breaking out the survey came in two areas. I think we have ethnic diversity and I think we also have diversity of learners. And, and again, agree, that's an area that we need to look at and try to see how we're going to do better. And then the fourth area is the accessibility and approachability of administration. And I hope you see that an effort like student surveys, our, our parent surveys and, and a presentation like this at a town hall, I hope you sense that it, that is our, our efforts, part of our efforts to be more approachable and more accessible to you as parents. So in the parent surveys, there was an open area, an open section for you to make comments. And one of the things that we said there was, one of those questions was, what's a question you'd like to have answered here at the town hall? And the first thing is addressing some of the facility's concerns. So before we do that, I'd like to share another slide with you. This is a list of the projects that have been completed or will be completed before this school year officially ends. And let me just go through this quickly. We hired the day porter to work cleaning the school throughout the day. We completed Crusader Station. We added a new preschool playground. Replaced the air conditioning units in Crusader Station. There's new fencing around the station. New smart boards and technology in the preschool downtown and Crusader Station. Tree removal and landscaping up at the road. Paved the entrance to the student parking so that they're not throwing gravel into each other's cars anymore. That was done back before the first day of school even. The softball field got a facelift thanks to David Domena, the class of 2024, and his Boy Scout troop working on his Eagle Scout project. And we appreciate Eagle Scout David for making that happen. There's new pavement and sealer in the parking lots at both campuses on Garlandon Road, both sides. The flood repairs from December 2023 have been completed. There's new lights in the forest and those, the gymnasium. And those lights include a dimmer switch now, so the lights will come on immediately. There's no warm-up time and we can lower them and raise them so we can improve the general functions that take place in, in that room. We also have a new drainage system that we put in this spring at the soccer field. We've improved the water supply between buildings on the upper school campus. I won't go into all the details of that, but that was a significant project. Refurbished the lower school gym floor. Two new rooms for Excel support at the lower school and a new design designated space for Excel in upper school. Now, if you don't know what Excel is, we, we are no longer calling the Learning Differences Program, LDP. We're calling it Excel. And the catchphrase for that is helping a student excel no matter what their starting point is. And we think that that's a much more positive name and approach for students who fall in this category. We also have new laptops for our lower school teachers. New water filling stations throughout the Garlandon Road campus. In fact, those water filling stations are so popular with the students, one of our seniors actually called it a miracle to have them. We painted the lunchroom in the lower school. There's a new walkway to the preschool playground. A fence at the lower school playground will be going up first thing in the summer. And that's also going to provide some added security for the lower school. There was, and then there's a new sign already on the lower school building that went up just a few weeks ago. And we are in process, we have a temporary fix for the exit to the lower school car line. And we got a permanent fix that's in, in progress. So as you can see, we realize that we, we have a full understanding that the, the facilities are an issue. But we are, we are really trying to work on that as we are able to work on that. Now, one of the things that I think is important to mention with facilities, all of these things that you're seeing on the screen right now, they were partially or fully funded through the Armor Fund. You may have asked, and many people have asked, how does the Armor Fund get used? Well, the Armor Fund is designed to be non-educational needs that the school has. Tuition pays for the education of the children. And then the Armor Fund helps to pick up that gap that's created for special projects that may not be included in, specifically in the classroom. So this is, this is what the Armor Fund is about. Getting these special projects done, getting some computers when we need them, doing some things with special events and things like that. So for those of you who wanted to know what the Armor Fund is, that, that is one of them. Another thing that came out of the comments is a concern for faculty retention and recruitment. And I want to couple the third one that we've already looked at, which is diversity. Wanting more diversity on campus. Well, one of the ways that we can, can retain our faculty and also recruit quality faculty when we have an opening is we need to be able to take care of them better. And that involves our benefits package. And that's where, we just talked about the Armor Fund. Um, and that's where, um, we just talked about the Armor Fund for special projects. But when we're talking about retention and recruitment of faculty, retention and recruitment of students, diversity of students, that's where this endowment comes from. If you're not aware, we have someone who has has graciously given us three years. Uh, we are at, just at the end of year one of that three-year cycle, but they've, we have two more years to raise a million dollars. Every hundred thousand dollars that we raise, this donor is going to match and we make one thousand into two thousand. We can eventually make one million into two million. It will sit in the endowment and gain five percent interest. That five percent interest that we get every year, we can use in areas like teachers' benefits, financial assistance for students who otherwise wouldn't be able to attend our school. Right now, those are areas that are put into our budget. If we can move those areas to the endowment, that's going to free up more cash in the budget. And that's going to be, and we'll be able to put that into our teachers. So the best way to to approach the teachers is by giving to the endowment. And because we really need, need in the, over the next two years to find a way to get that million dollars. The fourth and final thing that came up in the comment section was um, the potential mission and cultural drift. And here's what I can tell you, as you, as you think back to the beginning of the presentation a few minutes ago. We talked about the mission of the school, we talked about the end statements, we talked about all the things that the board has told administration that needs to be protected. That is protecting from missions drift. We are a Christian school that is firmly committed to a biblically integrated worldview and teaching that biblically integrated worldview to our students. That's not going to change. The other thing that's not going to change is we are a small school doing big things. Remember, one of the bullet points about protecting our school is class size. We're committed to keeping class size down, we're commit, we're committed to not growing so large that it's going to change the culture of who we are. Because what comes out in everybody that I've talked to this whole year is that everybody loves the culture of First Presbyterian Academy. So at this point, what I'd like to do is close out my portion of this and encourage you to watch the video from Dr. Brown, who is the incoming head of school. And your new head of school, Dr. Rob Brown, has a few words to say about his philosophy and how important both biblical worldview and the small school culture of FPA is to him. So I hope you'll take the time to listen to his presentation. Thank you for watching this as well.